Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof? I see none, so we'll move on to the approval of council minutes, looking for a mover and securitor for the minutes held October 23rd. Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Jacobs, discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Is there any business arising out of those minutes? I see none, so we'll move on to Court of Revision and Drainage. I'll be handing that over to Deputy Mayor McDonald. And Counselor Dunn and I are not a member and will not be participating in the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with opening the Court of Revision, and for that I would need a motion from Counselor Verbeke, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. All in favor? And that's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest amongst the court? No? Okay, thank you. So the item for consideration tonight is the Engineers' Report for the Lebo Creek Northwest Branch, the new access. I believe that would be you, Mr. Sharon? At all?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. Sorry about that. My understanding is that there are no issues whatsoever with regards to the assessment. The single landowner agrees with the assessment that they're being charged.
Thank you. And I'm assuming there's no one here for that? Oh, there's no one here, so then... Fellow counselor. So can I read the recommendation first, just to make it legit? That the Engineers' Report dated September 26, 2017, for the construction of a new access culvert over the Lebo Creek Drain Northwest Branch in Part Lot 6, Concession 7, corner of Mercy Road 7 and Highway 77. In the municipality of Leamington, the County of Essex, in accordance with Bylaw 75-17B, be confirmed, and that's moved by Counselor Verbeke, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. All in favor? Carried. And now to close the Court of Revision, moved by Counselor Jacobs, seconded by Counselor Hammond. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
...by mink sheds. In order to change that to an agricultural use, it would take a lot more work, a lot more cost would be involved as well. The size of the property also comes into play. This is a small piece of property. It's only 2.8 hectares or seven acres, which also limits the types of agricultural uses that would be able to go on this particular piece of the property. For the Bergen property, I have been to the site. I have not been in their building, but from looking at it on the outside, there's no question in my mind, it's a building that would be easier to find an occupant for than these particular structures would be. So, I think it's very unique. This particular one's unique.
Mr. Newfeld?
In addition to all of those points, this property is owned agricultural and the business that was being run there was more like an industry than it was like a farm. And looking at the buildings, that's the evidence of what it was like. This was a mink farm. Yes, it falls under agriculture, but the fact is that it was being run very much like an industry and the buildings represent that. So, I think that that is, that's a major difference here.
Your worship, thank you. Yeah, I think I understood that and I also, you know, in going through it a number of times, understand that their related industry, the machine shop area, is strictly for agricultural use and I think the one that we're talking about, the Bergens', is much broader than that, so. But I thank you for your explanation, Heather. Thank you.
Mr. Newfeld?
Yeah, I think, one other comment or two here. When I look at what it is that is being proposed here is not so much manufacturing as in creating widgets. It is more in the innovation and research area. And if there's anything that Leamington would love to get into, it'd be getting businesses here that are interested in innovation and research. Secondly, the point I was going to make about the greenhouses, it's an interesting twist. I think this would be the first time that greenhouses would be ancillary to a business and not the business itself. And so, that's why having the greenhouses there is for the creating of the prototypes and as Heather explained, if those prototypes then work within the industry, they go elsewhere to be manufactured. So, this is really about innovation and research.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. Heather, I guess if it was a perfect scenario, Tentec leaving Staples, they'd come uptown, they'd look for a space in a property zone spot, like around Iroquois, Seneca, Industrial, one of those shops over there. So, my question's more in regards to the taxes, how are taxing them? I want to make sure it's fair for, you know, instead of them going to a property zone spot on one of our industrial lots and going out to Highway 3 here instead. What's the, how does that differ? How do we, what's the tax base? How's that differ?
I'll direct that question to Ms. Roach. Okay?
Thank you, your worship. When Empac does their assessments, it is all based on the use of the building. Zoning does not equate to the taxation. So, it is when they go out to assess the property, they will look at its use and assess it appropriately.
Okay, so, if we use an example, okay, no, I think, I got you. Thank you.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. I guess Mr. Newfeld has sort of got it by one that this property is going to be used mainly for research and development of products. The other question is that, will this solely be geared to the greenhouse industry or will you be looking at supporting other agricultural processes going on here as well?
So, that's going to be a question to the proponents, so we're not quite there yet.
Well, I'll hold off then.
Yeah, so if you can keep that and I'll come back to that one.
Okay. Counselor Verbeke?
Deputy Mayor, I have three little points here. I just want to know that this is just, it's almost like the Canadian Tire trailer bylaw. This is just strictly a bylaw for this property. So, we're not going to start touching any other welding shops or machine shops that are currently running the gray area.
Mr. Newfeld?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to know then, this, what do you consider hard surface, Heather? Is that pavement or cement in the picture?
Through you, your worship. I don't believe it's cement. It looks like, like a, almost like a heavy gravel-y type of a surface.
Glad you said that. Thank you for that. That's all I need to know. And Peter, I was a little put off by you saying that mink farm is an industry because I want to make sure that other people who live beside mink farms, because if it's an industry, MOE will not be involved if there's an issue come up. So, I just want to make sure that it's still an agricultural business, just to make sure that we don't run into another catch-22 here. Thank you.
It is still an agricultural, well, it's the province that calls it an agricultural business, so. Well, that's a description of how the, I mean, we could say that about greenhouse operations. They're an industry too, but they're still called farms, so. I had Counselor Wilkinson again.
Just a comment back to what Counselor Hammond was asking there before with the prior example we had out on the 5th. I had the same concerns with this when I first read it too, but the big difference I see here too is the place out on the 5th, they never, they tried to get away with it out there. They got caught is why they ended up in front of us then. Tentec, on the other hand, though, is coming to us and, you know, laying out their case and good reasons why we should allow this. So, I think that should play a huge factor into this as well.
Okay, so we do have a question. If there's no more for administration, then I'll call the proponents forward and Counselor Jacobs does have a question. So, I'll just ask you to introduce yourselves for the records.
Good evening, your worship and council. Jackie Lasaleen, I'm agent representing Mr. Friesen in the requested zoning bylaw amendment for the property at 696 County Road 34, also known as Talbot Road. Thank you, Heather. I'm in a fortunate position to be able to say I concur with everything Heather has said. It does conform with the official plan for both the county and the town and it does comply with the bylaw, comprehensive zoning bylaw, as well as being consistent with your PPS. I do want to highlight a couple of points, just to emphasize that Tentec is a small, small-scale machine shop isn't quite the name, but it was the only label we could give it that's in your comprehensive zoning bylaw. What they do, they design, they do the research, they create a prototype, they go to the client's shop, they look at the problem and come up with a solution. It's not a manufacturing, it's not an industrial activity. They will not be having any equipment there, other than what's normally found in a barn that my husband probably has or wishes that he had, like a tabletop grinder and your hand tools. The biggest aspect about this is, in addition to the research and development that occurs at the facility, the client and the staff, they go and attend at the different businesses. And the businesses consist of other greenhouses and as well, other produce handling facilities such as Cavendish Farms and...
We do a lot of work for, excuse me, Bolt House Farm, Cavendish Farms, we do a lot of work for Highline Mushrooms, Bellwood Poultry Farms.
So, it's a matter of going to the facility to find out what the problem is and come up with the solution. And back at the shop, that's where they develop the solution. This is a perfect position for the company of Tentec, simply because of a number of reasons. One, they're dealing predominantly with agricultural uses, agricultural businesses. They're dealing with greenhouses, they're in the community that they're serving as clients. Also, they tend to deal with time-sensitive facilities. When you have Highland Mushroom, their conveyor belt system has gone down, they need somebody now. They can't wait for two or three days. Their product won't let them wait for two or three days. The barn is a unique facility. It really was designed and handles the processing of a facility, processing of a product. In this case, it'll become that workshop. It's heavily soundproofed, there's a substantial amount of insulation, they've got small rooms with low ceilings. It really doesn't warrant nor can it accommodate farming with the big tractors.
Jackie, if I could just interrupt you. Counselor Jacobs, has your question been answered?
Somewhat, but Ms. Lasaleen and her comments here are opening up a whole new avenue of interest here.
Okay, all right. I just, I just didn't want you to go over the same sales pitch that has already been presented to us.
Yes, and I'm trying to avoid that, absolutely, absolutely. So, I just wanted to indicate that it is a unique situation and every zoning bylaw amendment application is reviewed under that unique situation and it fits in the circumstance. Now, going back to the original question, I'm sorry, Counselor Jacobs, through to you, your worship, the question...
If I may, your worship. Well, the original question I had was research and development. I guess you've sort of cleared that up. My second part of the question was the, in respect to other agricultural-related corporations or companies, are you dealing with them as well and strictly within the agricultural area or are you doing outside work, say for Chrysler's, GM or whatever? I guess that's where I was going with that.
No, as far as Chrysler's, that we do no automotive-related work at all. And going back to the greenhouse, the research and development, excuse me, we can see that's not a big enough property there to do a big greenhouse farm. We have just received North American patents on a new greenhouse construction design and we also have three other patent pendings on growing methods and a few other that I don't really want to elaborate on right now. But that is where, what this would be, would be our research and development plot for the new construction design and also for the other patents that are going to be coming through.
And the reason I was asking that, I didn't want to see this, I mean, as Mr. Newfeld and as worship is saying here that, you know, this is exciting to see something related directly to the agricultural industry here and research and development in that particular area. My concern is, is that I just don't want to see this thing going sideways and all of a sudden we're doing, you know, this becomes another great big tool and die operation or something, not supporting what we're actually looking for here. I think that's, that's great. Ms. Lasaleen, you mentioned comments about doing other companies, say like Highline, you're saying about if their conveyor systems go down, are you going to be doing all that work out there or do you do that on-site or like, what's the process?
There'd be some of both. Sometimes there is work that needs to be done at the shop there. We do have welding machines there, we do have a machine shop, we do have a lathe and milling machine, so we do do some machining. We service, we do other things for, for the agriculture industry. We lag with polyurethane, we do a lagging for conveyor rollers, is another small portion of our business. And if there's shafting or there's rollers or something that needs to be machined, we do have that service as well.
Okay. If there's no other questions, your worship, I'll move the recommendation.
Were there? Okay, so moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion at all? All in favor of the motion then? Opposed and carried? Thank you very much. Although it was a public meeting, I should have gone to the public, but I don't think anybody's here for that. Yeah. Because I know you're not here for that, so. All right then, we'll move on to reports of staff and delegation. The first report is one regarding the Ontario Municipal GHG Challenge Fund application. Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. The recommendation before council tonight is that the GHG Challenge Fund application be supported, that the town of Tecumseh be the lead applicant in the GHG Challenge Fund application, which is being prepared by Essex Energy Corporation and the municipalities of Leamington, LaSalle and Amisburg be partners to that application. And that council approved tonight an amount of up to $15,000 for the preparation of that application. Just as an aside, before I get into the more details of the report, that application was actually due, was supposed to be due to Grants, Ontario today, though we received information today that they're having problems with their portal and therefore they've delayed this, this application for a couple of days. And I will admit that in setting, in preparing our schedule to bring this before council, I actually misjudged the fact that yesterday was a holiday and I thought I had a whole day in which to give them the resolution. They confirmed that the, the application would have been fine. Peter wrote them a letter basically saying that Essex Energy endorses it and that this report is going before council tonight. The report itself, the GHG Challenge Fund, it's part of Ontario's Climate Change Action Plan. Essentially, it's their intention, the province's intention, to use funds that are generated from the cap and trade program that they're implementing to help fund projects that will help reduce the amount of greenhouse gases that are produced. This particular application, it's specific to municipalities, although, you know, municipalities can enter with partners like Essex Power. So, the application that they're submitting includes a six-megawatt solar cell in one of the communities going to, that has, the exact location hasn't been selected yet, although the proceeds from the solar project would be split amongst the four municipalities equally. In addition to the large solar power cell that would basically be owned and managed by Essex Energy, part of that application also includes for some electric vehicle charging stations in the four municipalities, we would be the, essentially the owners as a municipality of these charging stations. Now, we haven't determined the number of them, the location, though that is the concept behind the application, if in fact Essex Energy is successful. And at this particular point, that's the extent of, of the application and we're just looking for council to endorse it to be a partner in that greenhouse gas challenge fund application.
Thank you. Questions, Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. For the general public's knowledge, could you identify the acronym GHG?
Oh, it's a...
I know it's greenhouse, but I just for...
Yes, through you, Mayor Patterson, greenhouse gas.
Moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Move on to the next report is one, noise bylaw exemption request by the Salvation Army. Ruth?
Thank you. The municipality did receive a request from the Salvation Army for an exemption from the municipality's noise bylaw. The request is for the purpose of facilitating outdoor events relating to their youth drop-in program. Those events will take place in a field adjacent to the church building located at 88 Sutterington Street and there is a map in the report indicating the location. The request for, is for permission to hold outdoor sport activities for youth every Tuesday night from 5:30 till 7:00 and to project outdoor movies the last Friday of each month from 7:00 till 9:00. The outdoor sports activities will have some noise related to children yelling or cheering and of course, the outdoor movies will include the sound and music relating to the film. The applicant has advised administration that they have contacted the neighbors within close proximity to notify them of the noise bylaw exemption request and that at the time of writing this report, administration has not heard from any neighbors expressing concern. So, it is recommended that council grant an exemption from the noise bylaw between the hours of 5:30 and 7:00 every Tuesday for one year, starting November 21st, for outdoor sports activities for the Salvation Army Youth Drop-In Program and that council also grant an exemption from the noise bylaw for, between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00, the last Friday of each month, beginning on November 24th for one year, for the purpose of projecting outdoor movies.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Deputy Mayor moves the recommendation and supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next report is one regarding the renewal of Seacliff Park concession stand operations lease. Ruth?
The Seacliff Park concession building consists of washrooms, change rooms and a food service facility. Also, it has a fenced-in patio and seating area. The washrooms and change rooms are open and maintained daily from June until mid-September by municipal staff and the food service facility is approximately 20 by 28. It's open space, it has all utilities, it includes a wash station, storage area and washroom facility. In 2012, a request for proposal for the operation of this food service facility resulted in three proposals being submitted. Council approved entering into a three-year operational lease with Jitani Enterprises for the concession and the facility is now open from Victoria Day weekend through Labor Day weekend each year. The term of the operational lease expired on September 30th, 2014, but a renewal was approved by council for a term that expired this September in 2017. The municipality is in the process of reviewing opportunities to revitalize its waterfront, as council is aware. It is anticipated that this process will take, take place over several years as plans are developed and implemented. As a result, a commitment by the municipality to a long-term operational lease is not reasonable. And although the tenant sought a longer-term lease, administration is proposing and we have confirmed with the tenant that they agree in principle to a lease renewal of only two years with the following further amendments to the previous versions of the operational lease agreement. In connection with rent, in the final year of the 2014 to 17 lease, the tenant was paying rent of $1,040 plus HST for each of the three months. The renewal provides for the payment of rent as follows. In June, July and August of 2018, the rent payable by the tenant shall be $1,250 plus HST and the following year in those three months, the rent payable by the tenant would be $1,275 plus HST. The original operational lease agreement allowed the tenant to sell only beer and coolers and that was later amended to include the sale of wine. Short-term amendments to the agreement have previously been approved by council, allowing the tenant to sell other liquor products. This proposed renewal allows for the sale of all alcohol products, but such products must be consumed on the premises and served in plastic cups or cans. And alcohol is not served after 11:00 PM. It is relevant to note that currently the food service facility includes only a countertop for preparation and electrical outlets. The 2018 budget to be proposed to council includes provisions for the installation of a kitchen, including a fryer, stove and a hood fan. The total revenue that would be received by the municipality over the two-year term of the operational lease agreement is $7,575. So, it is recommended to council that it approve the operational lease agreement with Jitani Enterprises for the Seacliff Park concession pursuant to the terms described in this report and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement.
Thank you very much, Ruth. So, questions from council to admin? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. My question is regarding the amount of cost that we're talking about when it comes to the kitchen, including the fryer, the stove, the money we're going to invest in the 2018 budget.
Forgive me, I wasn't prepared for the question. Something else?
No, I was just curious how much the, are we anticipating the cost to upgrade the facility for the kitchen, the fryer, the stove, hood, what we were looking at approximately?
Yes, I think it's around $30,000, counselor.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. As a point of clarification, during that period of time, is the lease irresponsible for the utilities or is the municipality?
I'm going to have to take a look at the agreement because I do believe that they, they are responsible for the utilities, but if you could just give me one moment, I can check into that. Oh, it's not. Okay, so, sorry, the municipality pays for those utilities. Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks. May I go further? To that point, in light of the fact, you know, we are going to be putting in some more equipment that is going to use more, I'm thinking about gas and some other things, maybe it'd be prudent on our part to monitor the use of this for future. I mean, we're looking at a two-year lease here for down the road, so we know exactly what our profit is. We're generating, you know, we're showing a $7,500 income, but that's not necessarily a profit.
No, and I don't believe it was really meant to be a profit. I believe it's meant to provide a service to the people that are using the beach facility.
Well, again, I just, I'd like to make the recommendation that we look at monitoring the use of, or how much of those utilities are, so we have a better feel in two years as to what we're spending. Thank you.
Okay. Got Counselor Verbeke first?
Where the mayor, what is going to happen down there, is some secret, revitalize the waterfront? We kind of know what's going to go on, so I mean, we're assuming that's going to take the path to revitalize the waterfront? I guess before you answer, Peter, my question is also why you have accepted that a long-term operational lease is not reasonable. I think if they're going to invest in this and stay there and there's been really no complaints, that I think we should be looking at at least a three, if not four-year term because you say it's going to take several years to implement this revitalization. And maybe then, after two years, I don't know, are you putting this out RFP? Was this RFP? Is this part of their lease agreement? They get next to, you know, there's some maybe unanswered questions, but I think that for what they're doing, that it should be a longer term than two years, so, well, I guess the next council is going to look at it then.
So, Mr. Newfeld, do you want to address those points?
I will try. As Counselor Verbeke indicates, there are a lot of questions that aren't yet answered. This is a work in progress and we thought that it would be best suited for a shorter term, given that the opportunities may change. And it's not only for the protection of the municipality and what's in the best interest of the municipality, but it's also in the best interest of those providing the services because as opportunities change, perhaps it will, they will want to see a change in, in the lease. So, we figured that over the next two years, the plans at the waterfront should at the very least solidify. They may not all be completed, they may not be carried out, but at least they'll be solidified. And we don't know exactly what all the opportunities are going to be at the waterfront, but certainly there have been inquiries already about what's going to be happening down there. So, this is an interim solution. It's not to show any displeasure with the services that are being offered, it's simply to say, we don't know what that world's going to look like down there in 24 months, but we should have a much better idea what it will look like for the, for the long-term in the next 24 months.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really tickled that the Jitani's are going to do this because it sure beats us doing it. For this price, this is really good return for our money and it's providing a service, especially in the light of what we've done with the, what do you call it?
The amphitheater.
No, beyond the amphitheater.
The amphitheater, yeah.
So, then I'd like to say further to Counselor Verbeke, when I look at 2012 is the year we first looked at this. Look, look what we've done in the five years. So, to tie us into a longer lease, I don't, I don't think that would be wise for all of us. I think we need to take baby steps and then I see this as a, as a wise move all the way around. And just the fact that we're putting in the kitchen is mighty fine for everybody, for you folks, for our people, for us to be able to provide that. I think we're, I think we're being prudent and yet we're still being aggressive to a degree. We're doing some things that haven't been done in how many years? From, from the day, not that I was alive then, but you know, when they had that big white building up there, days of the Heinz picnic, when tons of people went down there and we had that lull where it wasn't a well-used park. Now, we've got a park that's a jewel in not only the community, but a jewel in the, in the region. As you know, lots of people from outside come. So, so to me, I'm good with that, Larry. I, I think we need to take a... So to me, I'm good with that, Larry. I think we need to take us smaller steps in this till we see where we go. I know I'm now parroting what Peter said, but I just think it's wise till we see what happens. And, you know, everybody may have opportunity to do really well with this. So anyway, that, those are my thoughts. And with that, I'd like to move the recommendation. I think it's great.
Well, I'm going to ask you to hold on that because the Jitani's are here as delegation. So I don't, did you have a, okay, they do have a presentation to do, so. Well, you can come back.
Good evening, everyone. We don't really have a formal presentation. We were looking for a longer-term lease. Just the fact that we are renewing our liquor license again. So we would look for at least a lease of three years would be nice to match the liquor license. So if we're getting a liquor license for three more years, we'd like to be guaranteed to have the business for that long as well. Also, in terms of long-term plans, we've been there since the beginning, you know, serving hot dogs and the barbecue, no kitchen. It's not really a proper restaurant. We've made a go of it, especially in the last two years. You know, the weather's been great. So we would like if, you know, could get three years to match the liquor license, that would be great. Or in terms of long-term, maybe getting an optional, an option after the lease term so that we're, you know, committed to the business, to show that, you know, as long as things are going well, we have the first option of, you know, extending it again. Because a two-year lease in business is not ideal, right? It's very short-term, 24 months. When your business is only three months long, minus your rain days or a rainy season, you're kind of put back. So you're looking at 90 days of good weather, but in reality, maybe it's 40, 45 days. Until school's out, there's really not a lot going down there in June. Weekends, of course, people are coming out, but if you get two rainy weekends in June and the beach is flooded, you have no business as well.
Ruth, do you want to address that?
Well, just back to Mr. Neufeld's comments and regarding the plans that we have for the waterfront. As I indicated, the Jitani's were looking for a longer-term lease. However, administration felt that the two years was appropriate in the circumstances, although I can understand that they have commitments that they would like to make. The recommendation by administration is really, remains at the two years. We can certainly, if those plans develop more quickly, we can certainly involve the Jitani's, if appropriate at the time, in those ongoing discussions.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Worship. In light of her presentation, you know, I think I have great respect for what they've done down there. They've operated that since, what, 2012, has it been? We've never heard any complaints. You ran a well-organized operation with minimal facilities, as you stated. And based on that, I think I could recommend the three-year recommendation for extension of that lease because I don't think that much is going to happen. I know we're moving quite rapidly there, but I think within three years, we won't see that huge of a change. And plus, I think they would work with any enhancements that we're going to do there during that period of time. That's my own personal opinion.
Okay. Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. And I somewhat concur with Counselor Jacobs in the fact that, you know, we do maybe owe them some, well, some kind of timeframe that would give them a better understanding of our appreciation for what you do. So in your submissions, you talked about an option. And I think that that's something that we should consider. If the three years is off the table, then I think we should look at the option of giving them the first option of continuing on with the lease.
Counselor Wilkinson?
I just wonder, were we aware of the liquor license application for three years? Did we know those reasons behind that, why you're wanting a longer, three-year term?
Ruth?
Quite honestly, I don't recall that being brought up at the meeting. They asked for a five-year. I indicated at that time that that was not likely something that would, administration would bring forward. I have concerns about offering an option too. Again, that really ties the hands of the municipality when we're looking at exploring all avenues for that waterfront and potentially the concession stand. So I would not necessarily agree that an option should be something that should be incorporated into this agreement. Again, I go back to the recommendation of administration. In order to keep the options open for the waterfront and to allow for this council and potentially the next council to explore all those options, I would still remain with the recommendation of a two-year lease.
Okay. Mr. Neufeld?
Thank you. I have to concur with Ms. Orton. The two-year lease is not a reflection of the kinds of services that the Jitani's have been offering. It is administration trying to look into the future of a very fast, quickly evolving waterfront. In May or June of 2018, the new pedestrian pier will be opening. We don't know what the effect that's going to have on our waterfront. And that's just one project alone. Just earlier, late last week, we received the first drawings of what that pedestrian pier is going to be like. And it's very exciting to see these things happening. We don't know what those effects are going to be, but we know that they're going to be very quick. And we want to remain nimble in our ability to maximize the opportunities that are going to come. Some of the opportunities, we don't even know. Some of the opportunities, we may want to go to the Jitani's and say, we want to enter into these new opportunities. So this is not a reflection on their services. In fact, I would suggest to you that the fact that we're going to put $30,000 to $40,000 into a kitchen down at the waterfront should signify that we have great confidence. But we, administration is trying to say, let's not tie the hands of the municipality for longer than 24 months when we don't know what the long-term is going to look like down there. And so I have to, I have to agree with Ruth. The 24 months, there is reasoning for it. It's not meant to be insulting in the least. I understand why they would like to see a longer term. But in the best interest of our ability to take opportunities in hand and run with them, I would suggest that we still remain with the 24 months, at least now.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Worship. And in respect to what the CEO is saying here, I think we've worked well, or they've worked well with the municipality over the period of time. You say you respect what is taking place there. But in, I guess in dispute to your comments is the fact that why can't they fit into these plans, no matter what you're doing? I mean, they're there. They're in operation. You know, they're doing a great job for us. I think that if the municipality has plans to move forward with something, I don't know. I mean, we hope that concession is going to be staying there, you know? Like, I don't think it's going to be any rapid turnover or expansion or whatever you might be contemplating. But I still think a three-year agreement, maybe something could be built in where, hey, we want to make plans. We incorporate them in for the following year. I don't see a big issue personally. That's my opinion.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Andrew, what would be the cost you'd be out if we did do something different three years down the road? What would be that cost you'd be out in regards to your liquor license?
The liquor license, I believe, is between $800 and $900 for a three-year term to renew. But the cost that we put out to get a liquor license that the town wanted, that was part of the RFP from the very beginning. We weren't looking to serve liquor. It's something that the town envisioned. We had to hire lawyers. We had to go to tribunal. The initial liquor license cost us over $7,000 just to get. And then we only served beer and coolers to begin with. The following Tomato Festival, we got the wine approved. And now with Hogs for Hospice, we got the liquor adjusted. So it's not a huge income for us. We're not selling lots of liquor down there. Obviously, the biggest weekend is our Hogs for Hospice event that brings a lot of business to the whole town. So, you know, we're partners with them, the Hogs for Hospice Committee. We meet with them, and we work together for that event. We host the VIP area only. We don't do the whole hill. Last year, that was done by the Kinsmen.
So, I mean, when I hear the discussion coming up about making exceptions for a third year, a first choice, or whatever, that makes me really nervous because it leads me to think there's probably something we could be challenged with legality. But I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know for sure. And I, and nothing against Jitani's, I agree that I think the two-year term is going to work best for us. And I only base that on the discussions that cannot be made public, that the CAO and I and certain members of administration are having with private investors, let's say. So I agree that not tying our hands is probably the best way to go. I mean, if two years from now, we're not seeing anything happen here, we certainly carry on this discussion and continue on. But we really don't know what's going to come for sure, with any certainty, to the waterfront. So I'm really good with just waiting, just going with the two-year, as has been recommended by admin. I'd love to say five, but I think for the time being, we need to make sure that the municipality has that ability to jump when we are asked to jump. And I think the two years is the best way to go. So that's just my position on this. It will be council's decision. Deputy Mayor?
I agree with you on this one as well. I think that we have other opportunities. I think we're showing the Jitani's that we have faith in the fact that we're investing the $30,000 in equipment. Gentlemen, I'll remind you that very often, you, both of you, ask for, why are we not getting more quotes? And now this time, you're willing to engage in a three-year contract without asking for quotes. I'm just going to remind you where you normally come from because you baffled me on this, totally baffled me. And I'm not disrespecting you at all. I'm just reminding you where you normally come from. And I too don't, I don't see it as, it's not insulting. I'm just trying to say, I think for us, we have to remember what's best for us. And I do think we're showing confidence in them by doing that $30,000 investment. This is actually allowing them to do more as well. You know, at the very beginning, we did not want, we had people who came, and they did not want us serving alcohol at all. So we, too, council made some concessions, and we had pressure. So I feel that this is, we're trying to meet everybody with the hand extended. We give, they give, and to me that, I'm going to vote that we just do the two-year, just to let you know.
Counselor?
Thank you, Worship. And no disrespect taken, Deputy Mayor. I know exactly where you're coming from, and the only reason I'm saying this is I think that, you know, going back to my original statement, like, they've done a great job down there. And, you know, personally, I couldn't see them taking it on in the first place because all they could do is sell a hot dog or whatever over the counter. So it was a great, I guess, leap in faith that they even did it. And I guess just, I feel that a three-year lease at this point in time really isn't going to put us out that much, and it will assist them. And I guess I would say thank you for what they have done in the past. I would still go with the three-year recommendation, but however you want to put it out here.
So we're looking for council's direction on this? No, she was going to. Do you want to, you moved that, the recommendation as proposed, seconded by Counselor Dunn? So further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion as presented and opposed? So you're in favor?
Yeah.
Better than the nothing. Okay. So two it is. Okay? Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I, I just have one question?
Sure.
You guys keep saying something about opportunities. Opportunities for who?
For the entire municipality.
For the entire, okay.
Yeah, we're looking at all sorts of options on the waterfront of businesses that might choose to locate there. It's hard to say anything without getting in trouble, so.
I understand. Okay, we built that business from nothing. We went through, sorry? No, no, I'm going to say what I have to say. It's okay. Because they don't know what we've gone through from the liquor board, from destroying our reputation at Burgess at the Dock with the liquor, with people making up false rumors how we were going to serve it, which we never wanted to go through it, from losing money left and right from rainy days. We've worked with every committee, every special promotion, like events. We've never once broken any rule, okay, with anybody. We worked with every municipality, every event. And then now you're telling us you want to give us two years without an option. So basically, for us, the two years, we don't know what's going to happen after we put all our efforts, our name, our blood, our sweat, our tears in it. To me, it's not right. So I'm going to have to see it this time. I won't be renewing. So you guys can put it up for tender because it's very upsetting. It's very upsetting.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Ms. Orton?
As you know, Mr. Mayor, that situations like this, typically the municipality would RFP a operational lease. The fact that we have extended that lease for several years now just does go to show that the Jitani's did operate the lease in a professional manner. This was certainly not anything, as council has indicated, to reflect that they did not. And they certainly did not indicate to me that they would be making those kinds of presentations at this meeting. So I am somewhat taken aback by that.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
What happens now? Is he not renewing this one, or is not going to renew the optional third year after, like, three years after? Is it done now? That's how I took it.
I would think that we might want, let cooler heads prevail, and we'll see where it shakes out over the next little while.
Counselor Hammond?
Mayor, thank you. I think that in some of our discussions, and you're right, we need to let them rethink their position here and have a chance to sit down and talk with them because I think that we've scared them. I think that we've scared them in some of the comments that were made about some other options that may be coming, that they're going to think, wow, maybe somebody's coming, and then we're going to be gone. And I don't think that was your intent when you were talking about the other places and the other things that may be happening. I think that's the way they took it.
Undoubtedly. But I'm really restricted in what I can talk about. So I just, I just think, let them calm down. We can have further discussions, and worse comes to worse than we put it out there for someone else to take it over. So Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Worship. The only comment I want to make to that is the fact that you're absolutely right. Like, some of the stuff that you're somewhat, I guess, restrictive, we can come forward. But then again, it puts us counselors in a different position because we're not privy to some of that information. So some of the decisions we are making or our recommendations, you know, maybe don't fit into what is taking place. And I guess that's where some of this, you know, I push, you push scenario comes into play. And, you know, I guess, you know, I wholeheartedly respect, you know, the confidentiality that has to take place of some of these negotiations. But then I guess it comes back and it sits on us as well. So I guess maybe that's where some of the turmoil comes from.
And then the other side of that is that we have an administration who's advising us in their professional opinions on our decision-making process. And so sometimes you have to place that level of trust in that they're correct, right? So, well, Deputy Mayor?
But he came to this table knowing we were offering two years. We didn't just pull that on him. So I'm not, I'm not taking blame for this. I don't think any of us should, no, no, I don't. That was, I think, a spur-of-the-moment decision when you looked at her face and his face. And like you said, let them think about it. But we did not pull anything. He knew darn well what was in the report. And I'm assuming they came thinking that they too were going to sign on for this. So we'll wait and see, like you said, what shakes out. But I don't think we did anything wrong.
Mr. Neufeld?
And just to add, you know, there's been an assumption made. Yes, things could change down there, but what could change is that more services are required from the people who are offering the services down there. There could be opportunities for whichever service provider has the contracts down there. So that's why we're trying to keep this open. We don't know what the future holds, and it's unfortunate. Hopefully...
Hopefully, hopefully they will rethink their position and open the lines of communication with administration again.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda then, which is the comprehensive business licensing bylaw. Ms. Percy?
Council will recall in 2016, administration was directed to bring forward a bylaw respecting licensing and regulating businesses operating in the municipality. A bylaw was prepared and taken to public meeting. Consultation was held with stakeholders at two sessions, October 2nd and October 3rd. A copy of the minutes from the stakeholders' feedback sessions are attached to the report. In addition to the public consultation with external sources, legislative services met with building, planning, fire, legal services, bylaw, the Windsor Essex County Health Unit, and the Ontario Provincial Police. The process for the business licensing application, the applications will be made available at the municipal building or on the municipal website. The completed application will be submitted to legal legislative services who will coordinate the internal approval process and inspections, ensure all documentation required by the business owner has been received, and will issue the business license. The fees assigned to the business license depends on the type of business. The fees have been developed by taking into consideration the cost to administer, to inspect, and enforce each license type, and also through a comparison of other municipalities' by licensing fees. Previously, businesses registered were done at no cost. The cost of administering and enforcing the associated regulations should be borne by a business and not by the public through the general tax base. The plan for the implementation of the business license is expected to take about a year to complete, and businesses, as businesses are required to be licensed in a specific category are due at different months of the year. Home occupations and all general businesses, for those businesses that are not listed in Schedule I of the bylaw, will be required to make application in January. Phasing in the licensing regime allows administration time to process numerous business applications, including inspections by fire, building, bylaw, and the health unit. Accommodating all business applications on January 1st would not be feasible. Expirary dates for a business license is determined by that license type. They're spread throughout the year for resource manage, management purposes and to meet the needs of the stakeholders. The ongoing yearly expiry will help to ensure that appropriate standards are maintained, information gathered for all licenses is current, while providing a cost recovery process for the entire licensing program. The focus of the first year of the business licensing program should be on education and outreach activities to inform business owners and the public of the bylaw and requirements to obtain a business license. Education and outreach is often the most successful means of ensuring long-term compliance and is generally less time-consuming and resource-intensive. Education outreach activities may include providing information pamphlets to the public, meeting with business owners to review the application and also the bylaw, speaking at venues to provide information on licensing, referring business owners to appropriate agencies for additional information in running a business, for example, HST information, a public awareness campaign, which could include publishing a series of ads in the paper, advising the BIA in the chamber about communicating the requirements under the business licensing bylaw to their members and community partners. The goal is to attain voluntary compliance. However, matters that cannot be addressed through education and voluntary compliance will be enforced through the enforcement provisions contained in the bylaw. With respect to financial impact, administration is unable to determine with any accuracy the number of businesses operating in the municipality. As such, we cannot provide an estimated financial impact associated with passing the business licensing bylaw. There will be an impact on staff resources, sorry, there will be an impact on staff resources and education. The 2018 budget will include the revenue from application fees and include costs for contract staff to assist with the implementation of the licensing bylaw and to ensure success of the program. The program will be reevaluated so that those impacts can be assessed and included in the 2019 budget. The recommendation before council is a bylaw to provide for the licensing and regulating businesses in the municipality of Leamington be presented to council for consideration. The bylaw come into effect January 1st, 2018. Administration be authorized to submit set fines created under the bylaw to the Ministry of Attorney General for approval, and administration be directed to bring forward a bylaw to amend the 2018 user fee bylaw to include the licensing fees as set out in the report. Brenna?
We, just to clarify the business licensing process, I did a diagram up. You can scroll down a bit. So we're using a yoga studio as an example. This individual wants to have a yoga studio in their house, so they would require a general business license annually. That would include completing an application and providing the documents required under Section 22 and 23 of the bylaw. Because it's a home occupation, they'd also require a home occupation clearance. This is a one-time inspection by building, fire, and bylaw enforcement unless there's changes to the dwelling. This individual wants to open a yoga studio in a commercial location. They would require just a general business license for an annual, with an annual renewal. The next example would be a catering business in, in a person's home. Because the catering business is included as one of the Schedule I business licenses, they would be required to complete an application and submit the documents contained in Section 22 and 23 of the bylaw, and also submit the documents that are set out in the appendix of the bylaw under catering. They would also require a home occupation clearance, again, it's the one-time inspection. Now, a catering business in a commercial location, again, because it is listed as one of the businesses that have additional requirements, they would require an application, the documents contained in Section 22 and 23 of the bylaw, and the documents that are set out in Appendix C of the bylaw. So I hope that makes it a little bit clearer.
Good examples, so hopefully it helps. Questions? Councillor Wilkinson?
I have more questions, but just going back to that quick slideshow, I wasn't expecting that. When it comes to the catering portion there, the permission from Health Canada, does that fit under the bylaw section then, the bylaw enforcement? I don't see anything about, I see building, fire, and bylaw enforcement. Where would the Health Canada inspections be in that part?
Because, sorry, because catering business, again, is in a Schedule I, it has additional requirements. General business licenses do not require that a business provide a health inspection. The catering business in that schedule does require that they have a health inspection. So you would turn to the schedule that specifically sets out catering business.
For the mayor, but would you issue a license if they don't have the food handling preparation or the Board of Health? Would you still issue it prior to?
Through Your Worship. So the catering establishment, which is Appendix C to the bylaw, you, they would be required to provide the documents set out in Section 22 and 23, and in addition, provide proof of an inspection of the, by the health unit dated within one year of the application for a business license. The reason that we leave it, we have it at one year is because in discussions with the health unit, it sometimes depends on their workload, and it may not allow them to inspect a business as quickly as a business would require to open, so they, it's easier to say within one year, the health unit feels that an inspection within one year and that certificate is still valid.
Councillor Dunn?
Through you, Your Worship. My question regarding the in-house businesses that are operating food, and I don't know if it's catering, I guess it would be considered catering. If they've set and they've met the criteria in the past and opened, got a business license, going forward, is there anything that would cause them not to be, if they meet all the requirements, again, from having it, like, in a particular area?
So if an individual was operating catering business in their home, a home occupation, currently, they would be required to register their business on, with the business registry, and that includes, because it's a home occupation inspection of the home, by the bylaw enforcement department. Under the new bylaw, there's no grandfathering, so they would be required to apply for a business license, and again, those inspections would be required. Whether or not we would issue it is dependent upon whether or not they successfully meet the conditions and provide the documentation.
Through you, Your Worship. So if they've met all the criteria before, and yet this new criteria can meet that they might not be able to meet those, that's basically what you're saying, new criteria? If they've met bylaw, they've had the business license before, they've ran their business and had all the appropriate agencies in, and were running it, and now there may be changes to the bylaw so that those same criteria won't be met?
Because this bylaw has additional requirements, then is currently required of the business registry, they may not be able, if they are not able to meet any of these requirements, then they would not be issued a business license.
Councillor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. I have a couple of quick questions, and then I've got a comment I'd like to make if I can. Brenda and I had a discussion earlier on, concerning the home occupation, during the inspection process, is one of the things they're going to be looking at is accessibility, because very few homes can comply with accessibility, and we all know that, and I'm, and I don't know whether that would fall under the building department's inspection part of the, the application or not.
So for a home occupation, the bylaw enforcement officers would inspect also the building department and the fire department. It's not always required by building and fire, it depends what the circumstances are of that home occupation. So we would craft our applications to ensure that we were identifying whether or not fire and building needed to attend. When bylaw inspects a home occupation, they're looking for compliance with the requirements that are set out on the comprehensive zoning bylaw. So for example, they would be checking the signage, outdoor storage, parking, that they're not impeding the main use of the building. There's a requirement that someone who's operating a home occupation is only using a certain percentage of the home, so they would ensure that that is confirmed, checking for such things as handrails or property standards issues. With respect to barrier-free access, the building code does not require barrier-free access, it does not apply to homes, so it would not be applicable.
If I may, Your Worship, thank you. Thank you, Brenda. I attended one of the sessions, if you don't mind me calling you Brenda. How many, how many people did you have that showed up during our sessions that actually were here to, I know you and Ruth were a part of the first one I was at, and I know you had to have some sign-ins, did you have a count on how many people showed up to hear about this, register?
Without looking at the minutes, I, I'm going to guess between seven and nine persons.
Okay, to my, to my comments, you know, I've gone through this a number of times. We ask for it, we need it. My concern is this, I don't know, and Brenda, you had asked us some time ago, if we had questions pertaining to this document, could we get them into you so you had a chance to take a look at them? When I go through this document, I don't, I don't have a question because I don't have the answer to any questions. I have concerns, I, I have concerns that this document is going to, let me go back a bit. I think we're going to need all kinds of bylaw enforcement people, we're going to need a heck of a panel of people for the adjudication of this, because when I read parts of, for example, on page 23 of the document, the municipality may enter upon any premise or into any vehicle at any time, reasonable time, for the purpose of carrying out an inspection. I think we're going to have all kinds of people who are, I mean, I know that we're somewhat tolerant and we don't stress the rules, but nevertheless, it's here. And that's just one or two of the ones that are, an inspection, you talk about being, being able to remove documents or any relevant inspection and information. I'm thinking about a home inspection. If you come into a home and start removing documents or start going through vehicles, people are going to be upset. I, in, in looking at this again, I, and I don't know how you, how you claw it back or what you do to make any changes to it, I, I looked at the section pertaining to ice cream vendors. Can't be in any one spot for more than ten minutes, have to indicate what kind of products you're selling, well, that's pretty simple, it's ice cream. I don't think you want the flavors, but, but, you know, it, you know, you talk about the three hundred, three hundred feet from the nearest entrance to another building and all of those things. And I think all that is, is, is needed when they come in and make the application. You set out the guidelines for them, but I don't know where we're going to get the people that are going to enforce all of these things. And I think we're going to have a lot of pushback when, you know, you know how much pushback we get now from the taxi companies, from the, and it's not anywhere near as encompassing as what this is, so, as I said, Brenda, I apologize, I didn't have a specific question, more of a statement, that I just don't know what you could do to claw this back.
Sure.
So yes, it is a very comprehensive bylaw, and the, what we aim to do is find a balance between no regulations and over-regulating. The provisions in the bylaw, first of all, enforcement is by complaint basis. So the provisions within the bylaw provide us with the teeth or the tools should we require them. So obviously, we use that discretion on, on whether or not we, we need to evoke a certain section. When you're speaking about looking at records and documents and inspecting vehicles, it would be the vehicles that are part of operating the business. So taxi cabs, for example, mobile vendor or catering business, if they're moving the food in, in a vehicle that's part of their catering business, it allows us to inspect that vehicle, maybe to ensure that they are following the health unit guidelines on transporting foods. So it does, it does provide the teeth and the tools that council has looked for in the past, but it doesn't mean that we have to be strictly enforcing every provision with that, within that bylaw. I'm going to maybe defer to Ruth a little because she is, oversees the enforcement.
I think where the work will really be involved will be with the application process and gathering those documents and ensuring the applications are fully complete before we actually issue the license. The enforcement will, I see the enforcement as being in cases down the road, because we did talk about the first year as being the educational year and getting the information out to those people who are both operating the businesses or who wish to operate the businesses. But the enforcement will be those who choose not to license their business and going out and providing them with the information, and if necessary, issuing the fines at that time. Once a business license is issued, because we have annual renewals, we get that opportunity to ensure that ongoing compliance is maintained that way, I don't see a lot of enforcement in that area. I see the enforcement in the area where people are just choosing to ignore the bylaw and to not license. And that's just a simple going out and inspecting, seeing that there's a business being carried on, that there's no license involved, and issuing the fine and then prosecuting.
Thank you again, Your Worship, and I, and I think that you touched on it, both you ladies, and thank you, that I think the educational process has to be with our, our enforcement people as well. Because if you look at this document, it gives, it would give the impression that there's a lot of carte blanche where you can go in and inspect a number, it doesn't say, I mean, I know that you're only talking about vehicles pertaining to the Pacific, but it's just into any vehicle at any reasonable time. And I think that, you know, and when I say education, I think I'm on page 23, that, that we need to educate our, I'll say, our bylaw enforcement people as well, that, you know, use some common sense and a common sense approach when you, when you enter, enter into these people's homes for home inspections and all those other things. Not that they wouldn't, but I just.
Well, I'll just give you an example of some enforcement that we did with the taxi cabs regarding requests for documents. We wrote to them, asking for the documents, we requested that they deliver them at a certain time. When some chose not to do that and required us to attend, we made an appointment, we attended, we asked for certain things. I mean, we want to be very respectful of their business operations, so we aren't going to, it's not our intention to, you know, go storming into a business and demanding documents. That's just not the way we operate, and that's not the way we would ever want to operate. So we can certainly manage that in a very respectful way of the business operators. So we can certainly manage that in a very respectful way of the business operators.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I, for one, am glad we're getting some lines drawn in the sand, because I think we've been, as I said, with the taxi cabs, a bit of a Wild West when it comes to allowing businesses to open, open up hither and yon without any kinds of rules in place. Catering business down from you, John, that opened up and followed no rules. Places out in the country that are catering to the migrant workers with no regard to cleanliness or any kind of health rules, I, I think it's time we did that. Even some of the other places that are opening up that seem to have no, we, we don't even know what they are. I, I think we've been driven to this point. I think 15, 20 years ago, we, we didn't need these kinds of rules, but, but because there's been nothing, I guess like the law goes, you take, you go to the lowest point, right? That's, that's how I feel we've, we have become with, with some of these businesses operating. People have no regard for rules. So when that happens, then you have to more or less put the hammer down to a degree. But I will say, by law, as you know, with, with property standards, I, I think they've gone out and they tell people the rules and regulations. Sometimes, you know, you and I feel that they need to even be a little more assertive.
Assertive?
Yeah. So, so, so we, we already know that, that they're not going to be over and above what, what we would want. So, so for me, this is a good thing. I have a few little teeny questions. May I just flip through this? You know how I'm like this at budget, so what did you expect? Now, I, I know this is sort of dealt with on page 51. I want to get this out of the way right away. You know, Brenda, how there seems to be this tendency, and perhaps not a lot here, but you see it in bigger cities. I saw it in Toronto last year when we went for a weekend, where they have a pop-up business that might last for a season such as Christmas. Or the pop-up business we had when Hogs for Hospice came. Is that going to be, is, is that what you're talking about on page 51, when you're talking about that three-day, three-day, or salesperson day sales, three-day limit? Is that something that would, is that where we would get that pop-up business?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's good then. So then, I just wanted to ask too, and you know this question came up, and I don't think I got an answer. Cemeteries, are they included in this as well? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then I'm going to flip over to page 31, just the tail end of adult entertainment. You say that after we go through all the rules and regulations, it said, "No person or business shall operate in adult entertainment event within the municipality." Do you mean just the core? Or?
So this provision is not the establishments. It would be those mail review shows or what have you that would be at a specific restaurant, hall or bar?
Okay. Thank you. And then, you know, when you talk about bed and breakfast places, there's so many out there that, that I know are bed and breakfast and they don't have signage. Will signage be a requirement for a bed and breakfast to get a license? Or is that something we're still going to keep on the down-low?
There's no requirement for signage for a bed and breakfast, but I know there are specific provisions for the size of sign if erected for a bed and breakfast.
Okay. But it's not a requirement?
No.
Thank you. Then I jump ahead to food vehicles. Now, you're saying in this that the location of the food vehicle will be on private property, zone, commercial, industrial. I think we had this come up as well at the public meeting about agricultural, when we talked about culinary tourism. Is that something we could, we could add in there? Do you see that as such an odd occurrence that agricultural would not come into it? You know, we were thinking of Tis and Flowers and Hyatt's doing the, the fish food truck. So is that something?
So the purpose of those public meetings were to get feedback and, and determine what needed to be added or changed in the bylaw. And an individual had indicated that he would like to have a food vehicle on his property that was zoned agricultural. We took this information back. Legal services and legislative services and planning discussed it, and as a result of that inquiry or request, it's been included in the bylaw. So the location of the food vehicle shall be on private property. Private property shall be zoned commercial, recreational, industrial, or agricultural accordance with the comprehensive zoning bylaw.
Oh, apparently I have the version from before. I didn't, I just, because I printed it out, I apologize. Okay. So maybe, okay. I have, well, I didn't want to print it again, so I had to, sorry. You know what assumptions do. So again, back to the food vehicles, back to the food vehicles. They can't move around then. I think we, we had that come up where, remember, we had one that wanted to be in front of the art gallery at one time. They had to move along. And Jack's Gastro Pub, I believe, came in front of Superstore at one time. So we're not going to allow that type of instantaneous, if you will?
No. The food vehicles are based on a location. So if an individual would like to operate at more than one location, then they would be required to apply for each location. And the reason for that is because each location is specific to, is reviewed according to parking, ensuring traffic flow, and in this bylaw, the zoning. So they could operate from more than one location, but they would be required to apply for each location.
Okay. Thank you. Some of these are self-explanatory. Yeah, I got that three-day sale thing. I may be almost at the end. I think I am. Yes. So anyway, I, I want to thank you, Brenda, for doing this. I know this was a long time and a big job. I do feel some people may find it restrictive, but I spoke to a gentleman the other day who owns, has a business in town, and he was happy to know that, yes, he'll, he'll pay this as long as those people doing the same business in their homes are paying it as well. So I, I really think this is going to be for the betterment of the community, keeping people safe for, for whatever reason, keeping things organized. We have tabs on it. We should be the ones that know what's going on, not, not all these things going on underneath the surface, and we have no idea of what the underground economy is. So, so I'm very happy, I'm very thankful. I'm sure we're going to get some pushback, but, but I think we've done the right thing. And you said we will review in a year's time. So that's good by me. Thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Through your worship. Brenda, I apologize if I didn't quite understand, when it came to the food trucks, like for the Hogs for Hospice, that event coming in, and how's that going to be handled? Are they, is it under the event? A three-day event? Is that what you were saying, that, and they won't, because they're coming in from other areas and we're not going to be inspecting each one of those? That would be under their, whoever takes on that event?
So the bylaw exempts those that are operating under a special event permit. The reason for that is because we will be capturing all the information that we need under the special event permit. So for a food truck, we would be asking to see their health unit inspection and such. So there's no point in having them duplicate the process. So anyone who is issued a special event permit is exempt from this bylaw for the duration of that permit.
And again, if I may, so, and I'm glad Deputy Mayor brought up the one-day events for the Superstore, like they do bring in different vendors just to put in stuff for one day, in and out. And is that could be qualified under a three-day event as well then?
If you could give me some more details about the event?
Well, they have different vendors come and they will barbecue stuff with different trucks that will do, and either they just give the food away or different, they're, I guess, different products that they're showcasing, so that people just got free samples and... Like, oh, no.
So just, Superstore is what you're talking about. They invite someone onto their property to do this?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. They have a couple of different meat companies that come in and they'll, they'll barbecue stuff up and...
If it's promoting the product that you're already selling by way of samples, then no, I don't see the requirement. But again, if they are barbecuing or working with food products, I would recommend that they have a health unit inspection.
Thank you. That also brings another question, because they do charity sausage and, and put the money back into Salvation Army or PC Children's Charities. So they would have to meet certain guidelines if it's just a charity event as well?
They, they would, the health unit has their own requirements as to when an inspection is required, so they would need to contact the health unit to ensure that they're meeting their requirements with respect to inspections.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I would think the employer, Superstore, would want that assurance from that, whoever's doing that barbecuing or cooking, that they have that health inspection, so...
I'm sure they do from head office and all the way down to make sure that it's covered all the way across.
Exactly.
Because they do duplication all the time with all that stuff anyway.
Yeah. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Some of my main concerns were already dealt with before coming here tonight and, you know, speaking to this. It was in regards to the food vehicle portion and the pawnbroker portion. There's been great improvement since. It was impressive to watch Brenda and Ruth that night in the open house, you know, have an open mind and take it back and reshape this how it's done. And I think it's, we've improved upon since that night. I, I want Brenda to just expand on a few points that I've seen in here. The first one being something really simple, and I can't believe it wasn't in our one-and-a-half-page business license we had leading up to this, but just on page 17, "A copy of a master business license from the province of Ontario is now a requirement." But it says at the end of that, "If applicable." Can I get a brief explanation on why the "if applicable" is in there?
So this was a provision that was requested specifically by a representative of the BIA. So we have included that a person is required to provide a master business license, as you said, "if applicable." "If applicable" means that not everyone is required to have a master business license, which is issued by the provincial government. So it is required if the person is operating a business in a name other than their own personal name. So unless their business is in their own personal name, they are required to have a master business license, which is issued through the province. It has a five-year term to it, and then it's required to be renewed. One of the things that we talk about education is that we've created a handout for somebody that would explain that information. Because a lot of times when we're working through business licensing, we will, if someone is identified as not having a business license and we contact them, they'll say, sometimes, "I do have a business license," and they're referring to the master business license. So we'll take that opportunity to provide education and, and explain the difference between the two.
Let's drill down on that a little bit further, though. Okay, most of our businesses in the Uptown sector here, would they fall under that, under that requirement then at that point? The businesses, are any of them in their own name then, I guess, is where they wouldn't be required, is what you just said? So, let's use example of most of the businesses in the Uptown section.
I would probably say yes. Unless the business is operated in their personal name, they would require a master business license.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Moving.
Can I just add just one brief thing? Unless they're incorporated. So if they're incorporated and operating under a corporate name, then they wouldn't need a master business license either. Just, so your own personal name or your corporate name, then you need a master business license. And really, I just see it as a business name registration. That's, that's all you're doing, is you're registering that business name with the government, and they're producing a license that says, okay, now you can operate under that name.
Fantastic. I like that it's in there. Moving on to page 19, where, this is for grounds for refusal. Points D and E. "The issuer of the license believes that operating the business may be adverse to the public interests," and E being, "The issuer of the licenses has reasonable grounds to believe that the applicant will not comply with any federal or provincial statute or regulation of, or this bylaw." Can I get a brief, maybe some examples, why that's in there and where that would apply?
So those would be situations where the issuer of licenses believes that it's not in the best interest or safe for the public if they're operating. Perhaps you have a tattoo parlor that is, we've received a complaint or someone's provided information that they're using perhaps dirty needles. The health unit is advised until such time as they are able to come and inspect. The municipality has the opportunity through this provision to suspend their license until such time as it's, the health units have their inspection.
Okay. So D and E are kind of almost two in the same there, with that example you just gave, correct?
Right. So when we talk about the federal and provincial or municipal bylaw, that would be something like, if there's a history of that business not complying with any of the, any of the provincial or federal legislation or requirements such as Environmental Protection Act, then we can suggest that, or refuse their license based on that.
Fantastic. That's kind of my last one. And yeah, Brenda, it's been impressive to see what you've done here in the last year. And I've had this talk with bylaw officers coming into the building here, coming and going about this thing. I feel like we provide them with some bullets in their gun finally to go out there and do what we were asking them to do, basically, you know? Like the Deputy Mayor said, get tough. I hear your concerns there, Counselor Hammond. They're good ones, but I gotta let this thing play out, you know? Brenda's done exactly what we asked her to do here and done it very well. I sure, I sure as heck hope that it improves conditions in the area that's described around here. I look forward to seeing how this goes and how it's received. Fantastic job there, Brenda. Thank you.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, your worship. I had a whole bunch of questions too, but I guess most of them got answered in some of the comments we had earlier. The only one I have left here is the fact that non-farm, like, like these farm fruit stands out front selling their tomatoes and cucumbers and so forth are exempt from this because it's, they're part of their operation, I believe. But what about the ones that are selling local products off a farm wagon or whatever? I think you know what I'm referring to here. Do they need a business license now, or because it's local produce that they're selling?
Yes, they can apply for a license and they likely will not get it. Because there, it would not be appropriately zoned for that kind of an activity. So the, the stands that are on a farm parcel, that is allowed under the zoning bylaw. So, and we're not regulating or licensing farm operations or greenhouse operations. That would just be simply too onerous for our department to handle. So unless they can fit into a category that is listed within the, the licensing bylaw, I don't see that kind of an operation operating. It's not a food vehicle necessarily, although they can make submissions as to why it should be considered a food vehicle, and then we can certainly look at the application and determine whether it fits within that category. And then, of course, if, if we do determine that it should be refused, they would have the appeal mechanism.
So in this particular case that we're referring to, it'd be an individual purchasing wholesale, selling retail basically in a lot, regardless whether it's a local growing or or not, they would have to apply for a license and fall under the rules and regulations as set forth? I think that'll just going to save a lot of our issues. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, your worship, thank you. And just a comment I want to thank too, as Counsel Wilkinson indicated. Thank Ruth and Brenda, and Brenda for coming in tonight and fielding all the questions that we have. So thank you, ladies.
So ultimately then, I, I knew all of you would have a whole bunch of questions, so I'm, I'm very, very pleased, because they're all great questions, things that we need answered. The, the best question asked me tonight was, "Who asked for this bylaw anyway?" And, and that was in response to Counselor Hammond saying people are going to get mad when they, when we go out there and start enforcing these things. Well, people are already mad because we're not enforcing anything. So, and it was the, the Uptown business sector, its other business areas that we have, they're the ones who came to us in the first place and said, and we've been saying for years, I mean... said, and we've been saying for years, I mean, as past business owners ourselves have been saying, "This isn't fair what's happening. We're paying our taxes based on where we are, and these people are operating under the radar." So, excuse me, I'm, I was more than pleased when I got through this whole thing. And that was a long, long bylaw. So excellent job from both of you, all of you who are involved in it. And I agree with everything Council has said here. And I, I am very comfortable knowing that even if we move ahead on this tonight, that if something comes up that is not quite right or needs to be adjusted as the year or years go by, we know we can come back here and fix it. So I look forward to this being instituted on January 1st. So I will simply ask the question of council, what are your wishes? Deputy Mayor moves, support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried. Next report is one regarding the awarding of a contract of animal control services. Ruth?
So I'm going to go into a little bit of history right now regarding animal control. So when the municipalities of Leamington and Kingsville, at the time of amalgamation of those municipalities into two municipalities, Leamington entered into an agreement with the town to create a joint animal control committee comprising those municipalities, and they set out terms of a joint animal control, of joint animal control and the operation of the joint pound, which is located in Kingsville. According to that agreement, the cost of maintaining and operating the pound facility, including the expenses for utilities, minor repairs, insurance, maintenance, and replacement of equipment, snow removal, accounting, wages and salaries, were apportioned based upon the average use of each party averaged over the past three years. Any capital repairs and improvements to the pound itself were shared equally between Leamington and Kingsville. The contract between Leamington and Kingsville and the current animal control and pound services provider has remained in effect since 2002, generally with incremental annual increases in the contract fee. The current provider advised that he would end his contract effective December 31, 2017. An RFP was released. The deadline to submit proposals was September 28, and two proposals were submitted. Those proposals were evaluated by a team made up of an equal number of Leamington and Kingsville administration. The proposals were evaluated based upon the following criteria, that being relevant skill, relevant experience and training, price, ability to provide the service, vehicles and equipment, and knowledge of the area. Essex County Canine Services received a higher evaluation in all areas except for knowledge of the area. The price that Essex County Canine Services provided for the service was within the anticipated budget amount. Essex County Canine Services have provided animal control for the town of Lake Shore since 2010 and Essex since 2013. References from those towns, as well as the director of the Humane Society and the OPP, were included with the RFP. On October 24, the Joint Animal Control Committee met and reviewed administration's report in connection with the RFP. As a result, they passed the resolution recommending that the committee recommend, the respective councils of Kingsville and Leamington, that Essex County Canine Services be retained to provide animal control and pound services in the municipalities for a term of three years at an annual cost of $70,000 plus HST and a cost of $70 plus HST for each wild, excuse me, wildlife removal call. Again, just repeating, and the financial impact, it is at an annual cost of $70,000 plus HST, and then the charge of $70 for each wildlife removal call plus HST. The cost to remove dead animals is included within the service contract price. Just for comparison, the 2017 costs for animal control and pound services were approximately $85,500 plus HST. So it's recommended that Essex County Canine Services be awarded the contract for animal control for the municipality of Leamington and the town of Kingsville for a three-year term commencing on January 1, 2018, at that annual cost, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into the necessary agreements.
Questions for council? Counselor Verbeke?
Oh, I don't know where I'm going to start this, but lately there's been 19 deer killed on roads. Some injuries, but 19 were killed. But some of those were on county roads. Now, do we pick up the animals on county roads also?
No, we do not. Only roads under the jurisdiction of each of the lower-tier municipalities.
So I live on a county road. There's five or six county roads in here. Would he pick it up then on that county road, or does the county come and pick it up? And if we pick it up, does the county get charged?
No, the county wouldn't get charged. If he's picking it up, we should know that it's in error. That's a call to the county, and they would send out their own forces to pick up on county roads.
Any other questions? Counselor Hammond?
To answer a question that Counselor Jacobs is likely to ask, this $70,000 quote was less than the other quote that was provided.
He's already saying, what are council's wishes? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, support by Counselor Verbeke. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, motion carries. We have another report regarding application for sign variance on 24 Seacliff Drive East.
As council is aware, we do have a sign bylaw that was passed in 2011. In this past September, bylaw enforcement officers confirmed that there is a ground sign located at 24 Seacliff Drive East that's in violation of that bylaw. Because part of the ground side includes advertising for Seacliff Manor, Seacliff Heights, and Seacliff Heights II, which are residential developments located at 30, 40, and 50 Seacliff Drive East respectively. The bylaw indicates that advertising goods, products, or services not sold or offered on the property where the sign is located is in contravention of the bylaw. The bylaw does allow for council to grant a variance to that sign bylaw, and that council may attach any conditions to that variance that it sees fit. In October, the municipality received an application for such a variance from the owner to permit three billboard signs to be located on the ground sign at 24 Seacliff Drive. The map just provides a view of those properties. And as you know, this is known as the Pyroly development. So you'll see 24 Seacliff is right at the road. Where the sign is located is right on Seacliff Drive East. And then 30, 40, and 50 is to the rear of 24 Seacliff Drive. The applicant did provide submissions and supported the variance, and he indicated that we are seeking a sign variance because the sign is at the main entrance for four different addresses. The entrance itself, along with the plaza, is at the address, 24 Seacliff Drive East. And that same entrance goes to those three residential developments to the rear. Administration is recommending that the variance be approved based on the following. At the time of construction of the phases of the development, the intention was for all traffic visiting the sites to use that main entrance. One sign reduces the overall number of directional signs required, and one sign provides a reasonable and appropriate means for the public to locate the facilities and services without difficulty or confusion. So the recommendation is that council approved the proposed variance in connection with 24 Seacliff Drive East.
Thank you, Ruth. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, your worship. I guess looking at this, it'd almost be considered sort of as a mini mall type thing where they have signage out front all the time. So I would move the recommendation.
Support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Matters for approval. We have the minutes from the Leamington Police Services Board meeting held July 26. Looking for mover and seconder, Counselor Jacob moves. Counselor Dunn, support. Discussion. All in favor of that motion? Opposed? Carried. Minutes for the Kingsville-Leamington Animal Control Committee meeting held May 17. Mover and seconder, Counselor Hammond, Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. And the final one is the minutes of the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee held September 13. Looking, moved by Counselor Dunn, support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. Other matters for consideration are not listed. There's no report on a closed session. But we do have consideration of bylaws. Ms. Percy?
Bylaw 80-17 being a bylaw to provide for licensing and regulating of businesses in the municipality of Leamington. Bylaw 83-17 being a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaw 890-09 for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands ZBA 159, 696, and 698 Talbot Road East. Bylaw 84-17 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held November 14, 2017.
Council's wishes. Moved by Counselor Verbeke, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. Notice of motion that were not circulated, so we're in open session for council and admin. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I was pleased to be able to be to the Salvation Army last Thursday and help Counselor Dunn, the soup guru, prepare two different kinds of soup that he provided for about 60 or 70 people that were there, including myself. And it was, it was well received and kudos to him. He does a nice job, and it's good soup if you ever get a chance to attend, so.
Oh. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report on two conferences I went to. First, I was invited by Aqua to go to the Net Zero Conference. That was mainly talking about wastewater plants and reducing their footprint to zero. So the upper levels are funding a biodigester to be built in Stratford, so that then when you have all the stuff that comes out of your water, instead of de-watering it and then taking it to the dump, you put it in a biodigester, and then energy and all that. So hopefully they invite me back next year, and I see how Stratford has come along. It's quite interesting. They're putting it, the biodigester will be next to a seniors complex, next to the hospital, next to a subdivision. So I said to him, "We'd be watching to see what, what happens," and just how, how close to net zero you can get. But it was very interesting. I really enjoyed the experience. And then last weekend, I went to the Kingsville Economic Development Conference. And quite honestly, all of the sessions, I will have to say, were as interesting as several of the AMO and Osum conferences put together. There was one presentation that I found a bit boring, but it was through lunch, so I could just take my coffee somewhere else. But the rest were terribly, terribly interesting. I was only going to go the one day, and then I ended up canceling work and going the second day because it was that good. I bought a book from one of the speakers, Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community, Doug Griffiths. So when I'm finished, if anyone wants to borrow it. Actually, Weeds, he spoke with him, and they're looking to bring him back. He's from Alberta. They're looking to bring him back to this region, perhaps next, late winter, early spring. He's fabulous. A dynamic speaker, funny. You just listen to buddies. Got some really good points. So that was great. And then I made connection with Jan Holly, who's the lady that initiated that "Win This Space" for filling your empty stores uptown. And I can't wait till we get our new active manager in because she has agreed, she said to me she'd be more than happy to work with us, to help us set that up, which would be a really good way to fill up some of the empty stores without a tremendous amount of financial input sum. But you look for sponsors, and I think that might be, maybe not for this coming year, but at least something to work, do the groundwork, and have it for the next council to implement. Because it's, it's really a great way to get entrepreneurs out of their house, and they, they have the free rent, but it's advertising. And really, to me, I said to her, "What's key to this?" The "Win This Space" thing is really just the hook. They trained, they offered counseling and information and really teaching sessions on how to open a business. And I think that is actually the seed. The other is just the covering, because so many of her people went on to open businesses regardless of the fact that they won or didn't win. So if you can get a group of budding entrepreneurs and teach them what to do and how to do it correctly, you've already won. So anyway, I hope that we can work with her, just for guidance, and then go from there. But anyway, fabulous experience. Like I said, I got a lot out of it. It was well done. Attendance was eh, could have been better. I was probably, yeah, well, the warden and myself were the only county counselors, or counselors, I should say, from the county that were there. And Rob Masonville, the rest were other professionals. And then they had two of their own Kingsville counselors. So anyway, well worth the time. So if this happens again, be sure and attend. Thank you.
The gentleman who wrote that book, The Thirteen Ways to Kill, we did experience him, was it at an AMO or Osum? Godrich. So the Osum conference, yeah. And he was really good. So, yep. So to Deputy Mayor, and then Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Regarding the Salvation Army soup, it's a community meal thing. They do it every second Thursday through the winter months for anybody in need, so they can all welcome, are welcome to come out for that. I want to thank Counselor Hammond and Jen Robinson and a bunch of volunteers coming out. 100 pounds of potatoes had to be peeled and a lot of cooking, so, and they did a lot of the work. So God bless them all for helping that. And to that as well, we're doing another charity. It'll be the Giving Spoon. It's that charity soup thing I do. And we'll be doing it at the bridge on December 9th and 10th, between 11:00 and 2:00. All proceeds going to the bridge to help them get them up and running, and just added money going in. You'll get to see the facility, and there'll be 12 varieties of soup each day. So if you feel like coming out, and it's all by donation. You can't pay too much, and if you need just to eat, come on out. Thank you.
Counselor Verbeke?
Thank you, worthy mayor, and thank you, Bill Dunn, to opening up my Segway. On, keep November the 29th open from 11 o'clock till 1 o'clock. There will be 33 soups served for the soup and salad luncheon at the Portuguese Club, and all benefits go for cancer. It's John Welks. I am sold out of tickets right now. I'm going to pick some up tomorrow. So it's advances, $8, and it's 10 at the door. And last year, there was 800 people there. So parking is at a premium, but it's well worth it, and I'll see you there. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick note. I'll piggyback on Deputy Mayor's comments there with Jan Polly, Polly or Holly, not sure what it was. But anyway, I too listened to her down at AMO, and yes, impressive speaker. I like how you put that, that the actual end prize was just the hook. What I really liked about it was how it brought out, it almost exposed a bunch of potential entrepreneurs. Just a simple stay-at-home mom maybe has a great idea, you know, but she needs kind of a forum to bring it out. That's where it was just exposed. She, the stories that she had about how well it was, I don't know, received, yes. It just brought up so many different great ideas. Yeah, I hope we explore that more in the future as well. I'm not sure how the economic development officer is proceeding here, but I too look forward to having that come forward at some time. What I did want to speak with, though, is some speeding concerns we've had on Benny Ave. And just how impressive it is to watch how everybody helped out on that. When I got the Gloria Sorrell, she's kind of the leader of Benny Avenue South. I don't know if everybody knew that or not, but she speaks for most of that road, and she's quite concerned. And so are the rest of the residents down there. That's a 40 in that section. And I sat out there for an hour, and sure enough, and me included, nobody's doing 40. But when I reached out to Rob, he was very willing to use our new sign, which I think is turning out to be a great investment for us. I don't know what that message slash speed control sign cost us again, but that has proved, I've seen it at Gore Hill now, I've seen it on Benny. I think that is going to be a great little investment that we made in last year's budget. It's going to be very helpful. a great little investment that we made in last year's budget, it's gonna be very helpful. So thank you to Rob, Sergeant Jerry Ribble also helped out on that and then the mayor and councillor Jacobs also helped out at the police services board when they hosted her as a delegate. I hope that things get better over on Benny Avenue once Danforth gets opened back up. But I know the police have issued a, quite a few tickets since this matter was first brought up, but thanks again Rob for helping out, thank you.
Okay, anyone else, any from staff, anything? Oh councillor Jacobs.
Thank you worship. I just wanna note with, with a lot of great excitement really, I know we all look at the downtown refurbishing downtown and so forth, but as you go down Erie Street South, you see the investments that being made in that particular area, the Canadian Tire, the old Zellers location, you know, the corner of Seacliff and Erie and so forth. Like these are major corporations from out of town that are investing significant dollars in these upgrades. I mean, look at that parking lot at Zellers, I'll bet you that's a million dollar plus job that they've put into that. And I think it just attests to the fact that we are moving forward and I think if we have these corporations that are willing to come over here and invest that type of funds, that they have faith in our community and we are moving forward. So I think that's a kudo to our administration for moving in that direction as, as well as our council here, you know? I think we're going in the right direction and it's, it's really gratifying to see, I know I'm excited, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but, but I drive by all the time and I say, man, this is fantastic. So I just, you know, just kudos to everyone that's involved in this and the planning departments and so forth that are assisting and just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, just real quick for me then to wind it up. Excuse me, on Friday, November 3rd was the annual heritage committee's banquet and awards night and councillor Verbeke very much a big part of that and I think pretty much all of us were, but you were away, right? Anyway, most of council was there for that evening and $3,700 raised. I've just asked that question the other day. So a great, great night and a lot of very worthy people received that, the recognition they deserve. On Friday, November 10th, we all attended the employee appreciation night and some new initiatives there brought forward by our CIO where people really were recognized for things other than retiring and long-term service, which is all great stuff, but our own staff recognizing each other for, I guess the professionalism they, they bring into their different occupations here in Town Hall and, and our other facilities. So a big thank you I think goes out to the CIO and the staff that did all the organizing for that event and it was really, really wonderful. Don't know how you're gonna top it next year, so good luck on that. And finally, Saturday, November 11th, everybody knows it's Remembrance Day, there were a few of us there from council and it's always a definite honor to be asked to say a few words. And again, I'll say it to the general audience, that, that standing up there at the podium, sharing a few words with everyone, looking around, seeing the number of people that attended that, I, I, you know, I, I wouldn't even hazard a guess, maybe 500 that were there, maybe more than that. It was totally impressive. Normally it's during the week and the schools come, but this, this time was on a Saturday and it was, it would just, it was, it just gave me a great amount of pride to be the mayor of Leamington and then I'm sure councillor Hammond and councillor Verbeke, I don't know if the rest of you were there that I didn't see, but it, it had instilled pride in you two seeing the turnout that, that we had in this municipality. And so I just wanna give a big thank you to the Wheatley Legion, ours is closed unfortunately, but to the Wheatley Legion, Legion for organizing the, the day and it was a huge success, so. And that's for me. Statements, members, non-debatable. Motion to adjourn. Councillor Hammond, councillor Dunn, discussion on the motion, all in favor, motion carries. Good night.